Thank you, Rob. So I'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to this agenda this morning? Not seeing any. Again, if one should arise, you can declare it at that time. We have a delegation this morning. We have Kevin McNabb and Teresa Tibble. Did I say that correctly? And from Gray County Paramedic Services and Heather Prescott from Gray Bruce Health Services are here to talk about the Supportive Outreach Services Program. Good morning, all. And the floor is yours.
Morning, Warden and County Council. Thanks for having us here today and just introduce the team here. Teresa Tibbo and Heather Prescott. Teresa is a community paramedic and paramedic with us. She serves in both capacities, working SOS, community programs, and I'm a one. Heather Prescott, she's our nurse practitioner, works in SOS, but she also supports our our community paramedic program for older adults working with chronic disease. So she they handle a bit about everything here. So we went did this presentation at Community Services and were asked to bring this presentation to show the entire council. So we're happy to be here today to do that and just express my thanks for council support to be able to keep this program going. We we find it very worthwhile and very helpful to the members of our community. So Teresa is going to start. She's done a lot of work in the last year, even training our own staff around stigma, around overdose and addiction and stuff like that. So she'll start and then I'll do a bit about supportive outreach services, what the program is. And then Heather will talk about really the meet and taze of what she does and what the team does and some stats and and we'll kind of wrap it up.
Thanks for having me here today. I'm just going to get right into it. And everyone in this room makes about thirty five thousand choices per day, roughly two thousand decisions per hour or one decision every two seconds. What if one of those choices led to a life of daily struggles with addictions, mental health issues and homelessness? In any given year, one in five Canadians experience a mental health illness. And by the time we reach age forty, one in two have or have had a mental illness. Can you imagine feeling the worst you ever have, hopeless, lost, depressed, scared, and literally have nowhere to turn? If you find no joy in life and you feel like it's not worth living, wouldn't you want something to help you feel better and help you escape that reality? We're in a mental health, addictions and homelessness storm that continues to gain strength and speed, taking many down with it. A total of eighteen thousand two hundred eighty seven EMS responses to suspected opioid-related overdoses occurred between January and June of last year. That's data from eight provinces and territories. For a similar timeframe in twenty nineteen, there were twelve thousand three hundred and forty. For the same provinces and territories, it's a forty eight percent increase. This slide shows the apparent deaths from the same timeframe. You can see that Ontario had nearly half of all the calls in the country. So this is part of the reason why. I'm sorry, that did not come up very nicely. The average wait time for children and youth for counselling is sixty seven days and ninety two days for intensive treatment. Many people are just trying to make it to the next day. So many folks we see have nobody. The friends they thought they have often turn their backs on them. They might be estranged from family. Many of our clients have no primary care. This is sometimes due to doctor shortages, but often due to the way the individual has been treated related to their substance use disorder. These folks have a diagnosable issue, a chronic disease, but often are treated as less of a person than others who have a more visible injury or disorder. People from all backgrounds and socioeconomic status are at risk of developing an opiate use disorder. Every one of us is one decision away from heading down a similar path. Every person we meet is someone's son or daughter. Addiction often coincides with traumas, mental health issues and homelessness. Most of us in this room are quite fortunate and have a multitude of resources at our fingertips. People we can turn to and trust for guidance and advice. Many of us have close family and friends that we can talk to when times get tough. We have resources to draw from. Some people don't have healthy relationships. And they don't know where to go for help, but they still want the pain to go away. So they use substances in place of healthy choices. It helps them forget their struggles and numb their pain. Many of us have our own idea of what addiction is, either from what we've seen at work or witnessed in our personal lives. What some might not fully understand is the actual changes that occur in the person's brain with addiction. I certainly didn't understand this until I started into this role. So I'm not sure if we can get the clip.
This experiment revealed the reward pathway in the brain, primarily controlled by a chemical messenger called dopamine. Dopamine tells your brain to pay attention, that whatever it just experienced is worth getting more of. It's released by endorphins. Or when we encounter anything pleasurable or exciting. Especially drugs that can push dopamine levels ten times higher than normal. All drugs of abuse cause this unnatural rise of dopamine. And because of that, they're among the most powerful experiences our brains can have. As drugs raise dopamine levels, they also alter the connections between brain cells, creating memories of euphoria that trigger fierce cravings. But it's not just about seeking pleasure. People struggling with addiction soon use drugs to avoid the pain of withdrawal.
Withdrawals will make your bones ache. I couldn't leave the house because I couldn't take a step without soiling myself from the withdrawals. You couldn't talk to me. I'd throw something at you, bite your head off.
When opioids are abruptly stopped, stress hormones are released at catastrophic levels. This imbalance triggers the opposite symptoms of opioid use, including shaking, anxiety, pain, and intense dysphoria.
Many times I would lay my head on a pillow and think, I'm done. I can't live like this. I don't want to be this person. And I would wake up the very next day and I would just do more drugs. I was powerless over my addiction. It consumed me. It owned me. I was a slave to it.
This cycle of addiction, says Dr. Corey Waller, starts as the brain struggles to rebalance as drugs overwhelm it with dopamine.
When that happens, the body decreases the production of dopamine. And eventually you can't even get enough dopamine produced to get out of bed, let alone produce good relationships and good decision making.
To understand what happens to dopamine, Dr. Nora Volkoff has been imaging the brains of people with and without addiction to search for changes that occur with drug use.
We systematically were investigating individuals addicted to different classes of drugs. And we found that a common change across all of the different types of drug addictions was a reduction in the levels of dopamine D two receptors.
The number of receptor proteins seen here as read in the brains of control subjects are reduced in brains exposed to drugs. Few receptors means the brain is starving for dopamine.
Drugs interfere with your motivational drive. So imagine what it means to lose the motivation to do things, to just not have it.
And so anytime someone hears the term motivation, they should really surplant that with dopamine. Because without dopamine, you don't have motivation. And so when we look at a person who is in the throes of an addictive disorder and say, they just need to motivate. We're telling them to somehow magically make dopamine.
That's good there. Thank you.
It's not just drugs, gambling.
Thank you. Withdrawal of menthol makes people wish they were dead. I think it's worth diving into briefly to have a better understanding of what actually happens in the body and the mind. At rest without drug, your body keeps your heart rate, blood pressure and wakefulness in a normal state of homeostasis. If something exciting happens, you're no longer in homeostasis, your heart rate increases. But after the initial exciting event, you return to homeostasis because your brain brings things back to baseline. After taking opiates, which are depressants, your homeostasis is disrupted. Heart rate drops, as does your blood pressure and wakefulness. If there's a pattern of use at a certain time of day, the brain is smart enough to catch on to this and will preemptively increase heart rate, blood pressure and wakefulness, knowing that when you take the drug, everything's going to decrease again. But what if that pattern gets interrupted and there is no drug at that time of day as expected? Your body still produces the change in blood pressure, heart rate and wakefulness, plus more symptoms such as shivering, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, sneezing, anxiety. All of this is withdrawal. With an abrupt stop to opioid use, the part of the brain that handles emotion, the hippocampus, goes into overdrive, causing feelings of extreme anxiety. The hypothalamus, the body's thermostat, goes haywire, causing extreme sweating. Opiates cause constipation. So without the drug, the effect can be vomiting and diarrhea. Active users have their pain receptors blocked, but when the drug is taken away, it starts to function again. Minor aches and everyday painful discomfort becomes extremely painful. Treatment is possible, but it has to be guided by the individual living with this disorder. There are supports out there that our team can help facilitate access to. Sometimes a person is not ready to seek treatment, but they're ready for harm reduction supplies, and that's also a win. We're helping stop the spread of disease and helping them use more safely. The goal of opiate agonist therapy or OAT is to get the person to a dose where they no longer feel sick. Their cravings are controlled and they're not feeling the need to seek drug. Some folks may want to continue to use but use less, and others are seeking abstinence. We support both decisions and we can help with those medications. Methadone, Suboxone and Sublicade are some examples of medications we use on this team frequently. Methadone and Suboxone are oral, sorry, daily oral medications. That's a good fit for some. Sublicade is an injection given every twenty one to twenty eight days. It's quite favorable as it helps people with their addiction without the daily dosing. It allows the opportunity to get back to normal other important parts of life. They can start rebuilding relationships, perhaps work on life skills and strive to reach any personal goals they have. We know that medication alone is often not the answer. That's why we work closely with CMHA and other mental health professionals through GBHS. We can refer our clients to a number of one-to-one resources for counsel, counselling or trauma, addictions, mental health, peer supports and group therapy, even set them up with detox or more longer-term residential treatment centers. Recovery from alcohol use disorder or opiate use disorder is possible, but it's almost never linear. A person may be managing their addiction very well and something stressful or tragic happens and they relapse. We know this happens. We don't punish them or shame them. We simply tell them we're here when they're ready to start back on. SOS is an outreach service where people are treated with dignity, respect and without judgment. We do our best to respond as soon as possible as we know that there's a short window of time when a person has made the decision to ask for help that we don't want to miss. There's another short video clip, please. This one gives us a little bit of hope.
One challenge, according to psychologist Rita Goldstein, are the changes that occur with addiction in the brain's executive control center, the prefrontal cortex.
This is the prefrontal cortex in the front of the brain. And we're looking at gray matter separating it from the white matter. So you can see it's actually tinted gray in this scan.
Scans reveal that chronic drug use is associated with reduced gray matter, especially in the prefrontal cortex.
Those regions are essential to make advantageous choices, to make the right decision at the right time. So the lower the gray matter, the more the decision making is impaired. You have a decrease in the ability to control your behavior.
Neuroscientist Yasmin Hurd has found another way that chronic drug use impacts the brain. By analyzing the brains of overdose victims, she's discovered that heroin changes the activity of key genes.
Heroin changes the way our DNA functions. It turns on genes that should not be on and turns off genes that should be. And so that imbalance changes the brain function.
The genes most affected regulate the brain's key chemical messenger called glutamate, which is essential for sending signals between neurons, making thinking, memory and learning possible.
It's not that addiction completely takes away every aspect of your cognitive function. In fact, you have to work even harder. So I think people need to understand that people with these disorders are actually fighting a very strong battle.
But is this a battle that can be fought and won? Opioids are still being studied, but scans reveal that dopamine receptors reduced by other addictive drugs can come back with recovery. Rita Goldstein has seen evidence that gray matter can increase.
The ability of the brain to heal and to recover is amazing. So definitely there is a lot of hope.
The question is, how long does it take? And everyone's brain is different.
That's good. Thank you.
Yet most people.
That's the end of my presentation. So thanks for having me here and I'll pass it over to Kevin and Heather.
So what is SOS? It's a, we call it Supportive Outreach Services. With that, actually, this name actually came from peers. It was a peer recommended name of families and stuff like that. Come up with a bunch of names and was picked. So we're happy with that name. It is perfectly fitting. The idea of this program is that it meets people where they're at, either in their journey of recovery or or even in where they are, their choices, and also where they're at on the street, in encampment, places where we see people mostly are, are on the street and encampments, side of the road, those types of things. So the mobile team, we work together with community paramedic, a nurse practitioner. We have two mental health counselors and a social navigator. And I think one element of this to note is that we don't just look at after the health aspect. We look after their social needs as well. We very well connected with their housing here and social services. And we also have a social navigator that works directly with the team. In health, we sometimes think that we're most important, but it's not that way. It's actually reversed. If you don't have housing and you don't have social supports, it's hard to deliver healthcare. And it's generally, so what we try to do is make those connections first, at the same time, still building that relationship to hopefully give them healthcare. SOS was developed, actually, there wasn't a lot of good stuff that came from COVID, but there was some. And a lot of it was around collaboration and working together with partner organizations. In June of twenty twenty one, there was an outbreak in a rooming house in Hanover. And we were to support people there that had, were either exposed to COVID or had COVID. And the idea was that they had to remain in that place for about a month. And during that time, we found a number of people there that had mental health and addictions problems. And we had to support them and and keep them safe. What we found through that month by delivering primary care, addictions care, social support, food, more or less meeting all their needs. There was quite an improvement in their health. And when the exit plan was being developed, not only were we were having trouble not wanting to leave, the people there wanted us to stay as well. And so we worked on a plan to gradually reduce our services to where we are every other week. At the same time, we're still continuing to have opioid overdoses significantly in No One Sound. And so what we built in Hanover, we actually implemented here in No One Sound, the same type of services, where we have the same people working together, same organizations in a fixed site. We do it downtown at the market. So a bit about our timeline, we started in June of twenty twenty one. In October, we, we, that was in Hanover. And in October, we started in No One Sound. Around Christmas time of twenty twenty one, Ontario Health West had asked us if we would be able to do some sort of a work in the community of doing work like SOS but mobile. And it actually was timely because what we were finding at that time was is we'd make connections every other week, but then to follow up with people, we just weren't available to do the follow-ups because the idea of this is, is that it's not just one time. You have to meet with people multiple times and give them ongoing care from anywhere, probably from thirty to ninety days. So we were fortunate that Ontario Health West funded us for a program, a pilot of three months, and then we were able to keep going with that program. Through that time that we ended up with a rooming house fire, the same place that we had a problem with before and that we were able to support those people probably within about three or four hours. We were able to get almost like an evacuation center set up at the church where we deliver the care. And all the partners came together to support them and remained in place to support them. And through the, through also through COVID, there was a number of outbreaks, another, a number of other shelters or other locations where there's congregant living. And also we've been, you know, we were even to another municipality outside of Gray to assist as well. In April twenty twenty three, we, we, we never ever had base funding before, but we actually got base funding from Ontario Health West. It's not the full amount, but it's three hundred and sixty thousand, covers about seventy percent of the cost. We continue to look for a hundred percent cost. We feel that this should be a hundred percent funded, but but at least they've came forward with that amount so far. So this is how the team works. We have an addictions specialist physician that oversees the team for specialty cases. We have community paramedic that works with a nurse practitioner. The nurse practitioner not only does primary care, but that does addictions care. We have two mental health counselors. We've actually added a mental health counselor just because of the volume of mental health and we needed assistance in that area, especially doing assessments. Some people can wait six to eight weeks to do what they call the gains assessment, but we can do it pretty much in the moment. So we can get those off to get them into treatment centers. And then one of the most important parts here is the social navigators, that they're able to look after anywhere from socks to shoes to food to getting to appointments. And a big part of her role right now is ID. People quite often have their ID stolen or lost. And so being able to have that ID is very important. And then that makes up our team. And then we're supportive of all the partners and over twenty partner organizations that work with the fix sites. And I, we've been meeting now every two weeks since June of twenty twenty one, and very rarely do people miss that meeting. It's quite phenomenal to see people show up from these partner organizations every couple of weeks to discuss and help each other. So the interventions that we offer is medical care, addictions, medicine, crisis management. We do, we don't, we're a nine one one system, but we do do crisis management. The team will respond to overdoses, not as a primary, but they will be there to support people that are either if the overdose victim or the family or friends of the victim. We did a number of COVID nineteen responses and helping people, especially in congregant living, about care and testing. And we also did quite a vaccine rollout across Gray County for areas that maybe wouldn't have been serviced by vaccination. And again, back to the wraparound, social care and system navigation, which is very important. One thing I can say to this is that the people that we work with are not coming to traditional healthcare. They don't like, we all get in our car and we drive to the hospital, we drive to our doctor's office. First off, most people that work with, they don't trust the healthcare system. They've probably been wronged and and they, they're not coming. So we actually literally have to go and find them and we will do that. Every day we're looking for somebody that we need to follow up with and that's the beauty of this team. Public health has been with us since the start and they're really in charge of organizing the project. We, they developed a logic model. They're doing the evaluation and the framework for that. We're constantly gathering our data. And they also did health, health equity impact assessment to ensure that we are providing equity to the people that we serve. And Heather's going to take it from here.
Hi there. Nice to be back. I wanted to just share, in addition to what Kevin has mentioned about what our team has been able to accomplish in the year and a bit since we've been functioning as part of the mobile team. What we are doing and what we are still using our partner agencies to support us with. Certainly, we are aiming to provide service to individuals residing in Gray County. Certainly, there is some border coverage within Brew such as Chesley, Walkerton and Wharton, increasingly providing some advocacy and coaching to other teams that are starting up and wishing to expand their service and our model of of care, which is housing first and a harm reduction philosophy. We work with individuals, as Kevin said, who have difficulty accessing traditional services or don't have a consistent health provider. Individuals with mental health and substance use challenges, those who are unsheltered or precariously housed, so maybe couch surfing is a good example. Those struggling with the other social determinants of health may have chronic disease, may have a number of other accessibility challenges. Our LGBTQ population, indigenous communities. We provide episodic care and briefcase management with the goal of building that trust and helping move individuals to more traditional means of health and social services in the longer term. As Kevin mentioned, out of scope, we aren't providing nine one one service. Certainly, we do go to calls. We do have to call nine one one on occasion and we work quite seamlessly together. We aren't providing permanent long-term case management and primary care, but helping individuals find those services and get on the lists. I'll move on. Snapshot where the money is going, I suppose it's helpful to see that over the course of a year, almost twenty five hundred interactions with individuals. Folks aren't able to receive all the care they need at the first visit typically. They, we see it almost three quarters of individuals coming back to us two or more times, which does show us that people are building trust in the relationships they have with our team. Some of our common interventions the mobile team provides is primary care, typically delivered by myself and or the EMS. Home detox or addictions medicine, just in time, folks who may be experiencing withdrawal may have just had an overdose or those who are showing some readiness may have had some negative interactions with other services in the community. We provide a lot of referrals such as to psychiatry concurrent disorders, our partners at CMHA as well as housing. We provide a lot of infectious disease and chronic disease management and supporting individuals who might be experiencing human trafficking or home takeover. And our, our service navigator provides a lot of system navigation as well and brief counselling and harm reduction, as in that may be something like wearing a bike helmet on a bike or providing clean supplies for using injection drug use. Some of our medical interventions, particularly early on in COVID, providing a lot of support for blood work, wound assessment, STD, STI, COVID testing, vaccination treatment. We do a lot of opiate agonist therapy, as Teresa mentioned. A lot of symptom relief when it comes to the individuals experiencing withdrawal. We gave over two thousand units of harm reduction supplies. And many, many referrals made to partner agencies. So we don't own anyone. We support them in the course of care that they wish to go. Most frequently, we're referring to CMHA, our housing here within Gray and Bruce, to the emergency room, other primary care services, social services, peer support, public health, telemedicine, it goes on and on and on. We can, it's interesting, sometimes you'll see the four or five of us sitting together all on our phones to make the care plan come to fruition, just like that. We know exactly who to call. And it's been really great to share that expertise with the teams that are growing within our county and outside. Basic needs, socks, 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 so many socks. There's never enough socks. Additionally, things like tents, sleeping bags, tarps, clothing, shoes, ID, hygiene supplies, first aid, and advocating for things like cell phones, dental care, things that might be outside of the norm as far as social services. And finally, public health has been wonderful. I'm a bit of a nerd, but not to this degree as far as collecting our data and showing us where we're doing well, where we can improve and making sure that we're meeting our goals. We are also reaching out to our clients that we serve. We use an OPAC study and just some data that individuals are generally strongly agreeing or agreeing to, to items such as we're providing responding to their urgent needs, their crises, referring to other services that were knowledgeable and competent, being treated with respect, obviously one of our fundamental goals, and that we're sensitive to cultural needs. So we're pretty content with that and we'll continue to monitor and engage our, the clients that we serve frequently. Did you want me to talk to the, okay, this is just, just, you know, to imagine, you may or may not have seen some of the situations that some of our, our clients are living in. This is just a sort of an example of some of the encampment visits we've had in the last year. I think helpful to see some of the situations, some of them lovely, that please show respect. Thank you. God bless. This tiny home, a lovely spot we visited. We frequently go to the tents. We help people clean up. Some people don't have the life skills or the ability to do those tasks and we help teach them so that they may be able to be successful in apartments. Our teams frequently work with housing and social services, United Way to drop off clean towels, water, granola bars, things that are fairly shelf-stable to individuals who are in the tents and don't have access to water and to power. And that note says, hi, hope this helps. If you need more supplies or support, give us a call. Five one nine three seven nine eight seven four three SOS. Cheap plug for our phone number. And our motto, finally, when faced with challenges, we rarely ask ourselves if, and instead we ask ourselves how. Thank you so much. Did you want me to play the video? Are we out of, how were we for time? Great. Thank you so much. How were we for time? Great, thank you so much.
So we are, uh, we, we book on an on sound, but we are throughout the county, uh. Uh, every other Wednesday, we're in Hannover, Owen Sound and uh, Meaford, uh, Chesley, we do support there, we a lot of clients that come back and forth between Gray and Bruce and we do support in Chesley. Uh, we just started in Durham and uh, now we're making connections down in Dundalk. Uh, but we've been, uh, you know, pretty much travel wherever, uh, wherever needed and people call and refer to us. Yeah, and then safe and sound is a regular place for us to visit, uh, twelve to two. I can't say enough about the partners, you know, people that work together, you see the list of them there, um, actually you don't see the slide anymore, I guess, but uh, well, per not, but uh, there's, there's over twenty organizations that make this work, I know there's the, the, the core team of mobile SOS. But it really takes a true team of uh, whether it's housing, social services, CMHA, we have court services. The, the public health, it, it just goes on and on and on to make this system work, so uh, thank you to all them for that. And uh, if you have any questions, we, we can take them.
Well, thank you, Kevin, Teresa and Heather. That is a very compelling story. I'm reminded of uh, an old saying that uh, the one indicator of how good a community is, is how they support the disadvantaged amongst them. And I think we are very well served by this organization and all the organizations that do support the work that you do, so. Are there any questions for our delegations today? Counselor Greg.
Thanks and through you, Warden, and thanks for the deputation today. Um, I have, um, I type often the unfortunate opportunity to see some of these disadvantaged individuals in our community, just as a basis of where I work. When you talk about one decision away and intervention, um, and the provision of certain materials to support people through the program. At the back, at the end of the video that you showed, there's a lady who has two kids stripped away from her. And some take ma- materials or resources or given drugs. And then sell them to others in order to get the money for harder drugs. I just wonder, or is there assurance that in the provision of these materials, that there's not opportunity then to engage an innocent fourteen-year-old or sixteen-year-old, I mean, you talked about that one decision away. That they're being provided that one opportunity now to become addicted. So I guess I'm just hoping that the system itself supports it enough in-house that there's no leakage or, or opportunity for, for that to occur.
Yeah, through you, Warden, and maybe Heather could assist here, she's more the expert, but uh, when we talk about opioid agonist therapy, there are controls put in place around methadone witnessed, uh, that when they take their dose each day, it's not that they get issued it, and if they do get issued, there is certain parameters that have to go around it, it has to be locked. Um, but typically with us, it's at a pharmacy. Uh, Suboxone is uh, and Subacate, it's uh, Buprenorphine, which uh, Suboxone is built. That it's like a, like the best is a, like a strip that goes on the roof of your mouth. And if you were to try to break that down, it actually would release the Suboxone, the Dimethoxone, which would actually be uh, counterproductive to that. So it's, there's no sale value in it, and the Subacate is an injection, so that actually sits in your tummy, uh, it's there for twenty-eight days. And uh, the beauty of that is, is that you get that Buprenorphine released to, you know, reduce your cravings and reduce your withdrawal symptoms. And then that's our goal is to get them to that long-term, if that's their goal, is to get them into that long-term therapy, that's where we really can make a difference. We have probably, at any given time, about thirty people on Subacate. So we'll give it in parking lots, street, wherever. But if we can get them to that point, that's where we want to get them to, and then, and then at the same time, trying to work with their social needs. And uh, also their mental health needs, because it uh, usually is quite a, uh, uh, it's not just one thing.
Anyone else? Kim?
Can you comment on the housing situation? And what impact you think that's having on, on your work?
Uh, maybe the people see it every day and I probably like, like I just hear, but uh, you didn't want to talk about it or do you want me to? Yeah, well, I, I guess the thing is, is that uh, right now, um, housing being available, like, and I, I see the reasons why. You know, that they need to use it for the winter, right? And uh, right now, there's a lot of people on the street. We're issuing uh, tents. We, that's why I was late this morning, we were talking about a client that is going to be discharged from the hospital to the street. And uh, what I say is, is that when we do that, um, you know, we spend three or four weeks of resources, they'll be discharged to the street and the circle will start again. The issue is, is that uh, some people need support in the community, it's not just any type of housing, it's special types of housing that, you know. There are people that can, and hopefully someday all would get there, but they don't always have that right off the start. So when you release somebody into something that back to the street, you know, we, we will start this cycle again. And I told them that before I left here. And I, I don't, the answer is just not enough. Like Fourteenth Street, I really hope that it comes true that they are able to support that, like we'll have twelve places that, that people can go and when baby opens to be able to have that supportive area. But without those supports and, and keeping these people safe, because that's really at the end of the day, is keep them safe and uh, you know, ensure they have their medications. Ensure that somebody isn't trying to do a home takeover, because they'll be taken advantage of. And uh, and it's tough.
Anyone else? Counselor Kentner.
Uh, thank you, and through you, uh, Mr. Warden, I just, uh, speaking for those of us on the Community Services Committee. This is a made in gray solution that it, it's a very much a Band-Aid, but without it, uh, you know, a lot of people would be uh, falling through the cracks. I think it's significant that Dr. Era has acknowledged that there's a reduction in uh, in um, overdose deaths and things like that, all attributable to uh, what, what I feel and what, what I think the committee really supports is the fact that that, that this whole approach has been sort of uh, cobbled together just through the experience and the gut instincts of the, the people that, that are working here and, and we really owe them a debt of gratitude. And we should be looking for ways to, to help them and get the financing they need to keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor Ackles.
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, you mentioned about the injection, methadone and whatnot, there if I'm correct, there's still a couple of uh, private methadone clinics. Uh, or doctors that are administering that. How's the connection? You going, you know, some of the service going out and as you said, in a parking lot or whatnot, giving the injection and is, is there a connection there so that between the private clinics and, and what we're doing? Or you're doing, not we?
Yeah, and I think Heather will answer this, but there is like safety built into that, you know, when Heather enrolls people, like she's the prescriber. Uh, she'll need to uh, check their medical chart, see that type of information. You know, obviously talking to the person as well, so uh, so the uh, the, the methadone, you know, obviously is given usually through a pharmacy. Right? They have to go to a pharmacy to take it, or they have to go to a facility like, in a, in a OAT facility to get that taken. But uh, the, I don't think you can talk about them with prescribing convention.
Yeah, um, so there are a number of other agencies within our county that are providing addictions medicine supports. Um, namely, I would say our RAM clinic and our OATC here in Owen Sound. Um, I, I do work for RAM, um, so that's fairly um, collaborative. For individuals who may not be able to maintain appointments, may not uh, feel safe within the walls of a hospital system. We often provide a bridge for individuals to get caught up, get stable and then return to the traditional services as the longer-term goal. Um, as a nurse practitioner, I don't bill, so there's no issue related to OHIP. Um, all the controlled substances that Kevin had mentioned, methadone, suboxone, and subacate, all go through a database within the system. Um, attached to the health card of the individual, so they can't double doctor or double, or double um, dispense at the pharmacy. So there are some built-in safeties. Um, there are other agencies potentially coming in, not Gray County currently. Um, but we're doing our best to work with public health and our other agencies to make sure we're collaborative and providing our feedback by what's working, what's not working and where the gaps are in service. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Kevin and uh, Heather. Teresa, I saw stepped out to take a phone call, but uh, thank you very much for your presentation this morning, we appreciate all the efforts you've uh, you've been making. So, um, determination of items requiring separate discussion, are there any items in the consent item that anyone would like to pull for further discussion? Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Millen, if I could pull, I think it's uh, D, which is the uh, uh, listing the homes for sale in West Mount. Um, I'll just, we'll be looking for a discussion around the table when we uh, get there on, on whether it's still the right direction to go, thanks.
Okay, noted. Anyone else have any items? Okay, not seeing any further. Would uh, someone care to move that we adopt the rest, Counselor Warren? Uh, Dickard, and who would like to second, Counselor Bordenial? Get used to saying that name. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried, thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, I presume we'll discuss the uh, one pulled item later in the agenda. Okay, so the first item for direction and discussion is the update on the climate change initiatives. Would someone care to uh, move that report? Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Carlton, and we have Rebecca Denard, who is going to uh, lead us through that, uh, that report, so welcome Rebecca.
Okay, oh, perfect, uh, just making sure my report is here, there it is. Okay, let's. Okay, okay, thank you, uh, thank you, I'm delighted to be here today. Uh, as you know, this council passed uh, the Climate Change uh, Action Plan in twenty twenty-two called Growing Green and Gray. And I'm here today to just give you an update about progress towards those goals that are in that plan. And uh, it's me instead of Linda, Linda Swanson is the uh, regular uh, person in this position. Uh, she had a beautiful baby boy a few weeks ago, and so she is very busy looking after that little person. And I'm here happily moving uh, these initiatives forward uh, on behalf of, of her. So I'm just gonna dive right in, um, we, the plan contained uh, four foundational pillars and five key next steps. So you'll see a lot of those identified in our actions that we're, that we're going forward. So I'll be going through some of the actions and um, explaining some of the things that we're doing. And uh, and if there's any questions about anything, please feel free to, to jump in. So Community Action One is about forest habitat biodiversity protection and expansion. So for this, we're doing a demonstration pilot project in collaboration with Neighbor Woods North. And you may have seen as you came in today, there's um, some work being done on the county lawn to naturalize, um, create more naturalized areas. Um, this includes a tiny forest, some pollinator gardens and a rain garden. Uh, and at some point we will have uh, interpretive signage that will educate the public about the purpose and the value of these naturalized areas. Uh, and the idea of this project is to provide an example for others to follow. So we're learning a lot of lessons about how to do this and what are some good policies and procedures to, to make this effective. And uh, with the hopes that other naturalized areas can spring up around the county, um, in former, former lawns. So just to provide you a little overview of the map of where things are planned, um, you'll see the rain gardens, sorry, this type is really tiny, but hopefully you have it in your report. Um, the rain garden there is at the bottom of the hill to try and capture some of the stormwater that comes down that hill. Uh, we also have pollinator gardens, um, next to the, to the staff entrance to sort of provide a, an education piece there. There's also some trees, um, I'm hoping they're going to be apple trees, because that would be great. Um, around um, the other side of the building as well as a, a south hill wildflower garden. That's a place where it's actually really difficult to mow, so it was a health and safety issue for the, for the maintenance staff to be mowing that area. So we're now turning it into a beautiful wildflower garden, so that solves two problems in one go. And uh, the last one is a pollinator garden that we're looking to put a place around the monument and wanted to get uh, some, show you how that would would look with some visualizations there to, so that you see that it's um, sort of enhancing the monument and framing it nicely with uh, with these native plants. And there still will be a place for people to access the monument if they need to um, have a moment there or place a wreath or be uh, you know, interact with it in some way, there's, there's going to be access, accessing the plants will mostly be behind and around. Uh, so that's uh, that's that one. Uh, our next community action is capacity building around sustainable agriculture, another foundational pillar. And uh, for this one, Wellington County is actually leading a, a pilot called the Experimental Acres Farm Pilot. Uh, with participating farms in Wellington, Gray and Dufferin Counties. And this project provides farmers with a low-risk way to try a new sustainable agriculture practice. And we have everything from really experienced, um, twenty years' experience organic farmers to more um, conventional farmers who are, are really open to trying something new. And it's really exciting to see the, the willingness for, for these, these farmers to participate and try something that they may not be going, you know, fully to a full-on sustainable farm, but they're looking at ways to make the progress, their practices, farming practices more sustainable. Uh, so lovely to see like kind of meeting them where they're at and, and being able to move everybody forward uh, with the next steps. Um, and Gray, Gray County will, will, again, will be receiving data about how the new methods are working with the hopes that we can how, um, share that and have this project replicated by other farms in Gray County. Um, so we're also exploring options with uh, Gray Egg Services in Wellington County to continue this program beyond December twenty twenty-three, that's when uh, it was founded, funded by the, our Future Futures Program, which that funding is coming to an end. So if we want to have this program continue, we're exploring ways that we can work with partners to, to make that happen. Okay, so local food production, that's another community act, um, action. Uh, this one's being led primarily by our planning staff and they're working with uh, Gray Bruce Public Health as well as the Security Action Group as in the Community Garden Network to make a map of the community gardens in, in the county. So community gardens are, are really a win-win-win for everybody, it supports local food, biodiversity, green infrastructure. It also promotes, promotes active living and an age-friendly community strategy action plan as well. So there's lots of advantage to community gardens. So we're creating a map to find out which, what types of gardens there are, if they're open to the public, if they have plots available, how accessible are they, where do they grow? And once that map is complete, it's uh, also working with our GS, GIS department. Um, it will be on our website as well as available through the two-one-one information service. So people looking for community gardens will know where to go to find them and get involved. Uh, another community action is to accelerate zero emissions vehicle adoption. So another collaboration, and this one's being led by Dufferin County with a, a lot of partners and uh, including Gray, Bruce, Wellington, here on West Perth. And we're creating the Southwestern Ontario EV Charging Network, uh, the branding is being developed, so it will have a much more um, appealing and succinct name uh, at some point. Uh, and in this, in this one, Ivy was selected by RFP to uh, install and manage the chargers. And they will be applying to the ZVAP funding from Intercan in the fall so that we can get these chargers built. And uh, the idea is that they will um, install, maintain and manage the chargers and it will be a, a paid charging service. So it's their, their business is to do that, but at this point it's at no cost to any of the municipalities or the county to have these chargers um, installed, the idea was that we wanted to get a good coverage of, of the area, because um, currently there's only, you know, a few routes that you can go through with an EV and be sure to have charging. And the idea is that we really want broad coverage, so you can go anywhere you want to in the region, in the county and be sure to be, have a, an accessible charger um, close by. So the current plan is banks of level two chargers in Meaford, Dundalk and Hanover. And the level twos are put in places where you have people stay for a little, a bit of time. It's a, a library or a, a, an entertainment facility or an arena, somewhere that you are probably going to stay for a few hours and get your charge. And then they're doing level three chargers in Durham, Flusherton and Thornbury, and that's for those quick stop in and stop out, grab a coffee, grab your charge and off you go. Uh, we're also working with member municipalities to explore other opportunities to expand EV charging, both on the fleet side and on the public charging side in the future, this is not the only project, so if we didn't get in on this one, there'll hopefully be other ones to uh, really get more and more charging in the area. You can say this is, this is Linda presenting at a, at an EV um, conference, because this project was sort of selected because of its innovative and collaborative nature. Okay. There we go. Okay, so this is the one that we're leading, this is Community Action Eleven, which is developing green standards for new buildings. And we are leading this collaboration with Dufferin and Wellington County to create uh, green development standards for all of our communities. So this is basically amending the building code so that um, there's more green development in, when, when plans are So this is basically amending the building code so that um, there's more green development in, when, when plans are approved. So, this is obviously at the lower-tier level, but we are looking to do this collaboratively so that. When it comes to, it's more efficient for to grow out one set of standards for. All of, all of the smaller municipalities rather than each individual doing it independently, which would not be efficient and would also create a, a lot of confusion for. Uh, the development industry. So we're looking to have a one standard that's fairly consistent across the, the area so that it's easier for the developers to adopt. And to sort of save work for not replicating work on, on each initial, um, level. We've applied for funding to support this project um, through the Codes Acceleration Fund, which is a federal fund. We expect to hear from that one anytime. And we're also working through the green, FCM's Green Municipal Fund. And if we are successful in securing funding, it will allow us to expand the scope of this project. We get to um, potentially hire more staff, have more paid staff time. Uh, but it is fully funded by all three counties, so that will, this project will proceed regardless of whether we get funding, it's just how. How long it will last and how, how much, that's the scope of the project will, will vary depending on the funding situation. So we are currently developing the RFP, and we hope to be hiring a consultant to start work on this in the fall of, of twenty twenty-three. Oh, hey, and moving on to the next one, which is Community Action Twelve. It's about residential building energy and efficiency retrofits. Uh, we're working currently with the Clean Air Partnership, which is a, an organization that works, helps municipalities like us to, to get um, projects off the ground. To do an application for community efficiency financing from the Green Municipal Fund from FCM. Uh, the initial funding will allow us to do a feasibility study and design a retrofit financing program that we would be bringing, bringing forward to council for consideration. It'll also give us a lot of data about what our current housing stock is, and, and we're, we're breaking it down by. Into the different lower tiers, so we understand that the housing stock may be different in the different municipalities, and we're trying to get that information about. What kind of retrofits will be needed and where they will be needed. So that, that funding will help us to do that. The, currently, the staff will continue to promote the existing uh, incentive programs such as the uh, Canada Greener Homes Grant and the Enbridge Home Efficiency Rebate. So that's just to educate and understand the uptake of these federal um, and commercial programs in our county, cuz we wanna be bringing that federal money. Uh, to us, and hopefully we get our, our people using that money uh, instead of having it all go other places. So, we're, we're working on promoting that. And that will be one of the things that we'll be working on with our engagement coordinator. So, uh, I'm very delighted that we have hired our uh, engagement and outreach coordinator. She's here today, Megan Miles. Uh, she comes to us from, most recently, she was a counselor in North Bruce Peninsula. She's also working on an MSC from University of Wealth on rural planning and development. She's been a business owner, a freelance consultant, a strategic advisor with Parks Canada, and she's also been deeply engaged with. Local community groups such as the Bruce Peninsula Environment Group. And the Lions Head Farmers Market. So she really comes with us with a wealth of community knowledge and experience, and she's. She's only been here a week. She started on Monday, and she's already doing amazing things, and I'm learning a ton about local issues and stuff because she's really got that local piece that's uh. Potentially missing for me. So that's wonderful to have her around. Uh, so some of the things that she's gonna be start, starting to work on. Is initially a, a communications plan, so we can, that aligns with the county communications plan. So that we can start to really tell the story of all the, all of the great things we're doing. Because it's one thing to do it here, but we're really gonna be able to spread the word and get more people excited about climate action, both in, in Great County and beyond by telling people about it. So that's, that's something that we really gotta um, start doing. There's also an engagement plan is to work on getting more people involved in climate action. So the Greening Homes in Gray is one example of that, getting more people wanting to do home retrofits, getting their houses to be more efficient. As well as getting involved in all of the other community actions uh, that I've talked about previously and the ones that are in the plan, but not currently being actioned. So that's getting, getting everybody involved. She also will continue to work with me and, and participating in some key networks. There's the Climate Change Community of Practice, which is made up of municipal staff from all of, of the member municipalities. We work together to um, think about best practices, about issues, all of the environmental things that everybody's doing, to share what we're, what we're up to. And uh, collaborate on, on various issues. There's also the Great Bruce Climate Action Network. That's a grassroots-led organization that is uh, made up of climate action teams from the various communities. And they are really connected to the grassroots level of what is, what is happening in, in the counties. Uh, there's also the Community, Healthy Communities Partnership, which is led by Public Health. Uh, this is a, has a, quite a broad mandate, but one of the things that they're, they talk about is climate. So we sit on that committee to get the climate views um, into that, into that space. We also are working with, we're coming, we're coming on, on a sharing circle, and that uh, that is really connecting with the indigenous communities and understanding their perspectives. And trying to incorporate traditional knowledge into any, any of our action plans going forward. Uh, some new initiatives that we hope to get underway would be a, a climate advisory group, and that would be uh, as opposed to something like the, the Great Bruce Climate Action Network. This is more for community leaders, so um, leaders in the hospital or public health or post-secondary, the school boards. Major employers, people who have a lot of power and influence in our community. Get them talking about climate issues and what can they do, and how can that group of people work together to advance climate change initiatives in our community. We're also hoping to put together a corporate green team, and that would be looking at uh, within our own operations. Each department probably has ideas about how they're, they could be made more efficient. Uh, let's try and get a venue for those ideas to come forward and get action. So getting a group of people together who can just think about what we could do corporately uh, on a day-to-day basis that would make us more, more green. Okay, so that's the community uh, side of things. So we're gonna move on to uh, our corporate actions, and this is what are we doing in our own operations. To uh, to become more environmentally friendly and mitigate our own carbon impact. Uh, it's important to do this because we wanna be shown as leading by example. If, if the county is leading and doing things that can inspire others to follow along in our, in our footsteps. So our, one of our first corporate actions is energy-efficient new buildings. Uh, we did a net-zero feasibility assessment on the new Rockwood Terrace Long-Term Care Home. Uh, it would be, if not the first, one of the first net-zero um, long-term care homes in the province. So that's, that'd be exciting if, if and when that, that goes forward. It has been selected as a net-zero-ready design, and uh, it's gonna, it's incorporated into the plans for the new building. So that is, that is moving forward, and it will, the building will be very energy-efficient, and it will be on track to be net-zero by twenty forty-five, which is our corporate uh, net-zero target. Uh, we're also looking to retrofit all of our existing uh, facilities to be net-zero by twenty forty-five. Uh, this is where, so we have a lot of information about the annual GHG and energy used for the most of the buildings. But we're looking to dive, do a deeper dive into analyzing the daily, weekly, monthly, yearly trends to really help. Staff understand the building operations and commissioning and to lower our utility bills. Uh, we have the data about the, the big, the big picture, but we need to do a deeper dive so we can understand what to do about. Why is this building using this electricity? You'll see at the bottom there, it's a little graph of um. Sidney and Campus, and there's those, those spikes that happen at nine AM every morning. Why is that happening? Can we do anything about it? Can we, can we reduce those spikes because we, we pay electricity based on peak demand? So it's that type of work that we need to do and, and just looking at the data from our buildings, we can gain so much insight into. How we might just make them better at, at a zero cost um, just by changing things, how we, how we work them. So we're currently hiring a, a climate change data coordinator who will assist with this work. Uh, there were over a hundred and thirty applicants, and we finished doing interviews yesterday, so I'm really excited that we're gonna get something, somebody amazing who will help to uh, advance this, this for the county. Uh, and we may invest depending on their, what skill sets they bring to the table. We may be investing in some um. Outside training and support for this work, such as the Mayor's Megawatt Challenge or an Energy Treasure Hunt, where we really do a deep dive into a building or a set of buildings to understand what's going on. Uh, and then after we have that data, that's the time when we example capital plans, and we update our energy and conservation demand management plan to align with our net-zero goals. Uh, and one building that we've, we've really put some, a lot of emphasis in is our Sidney and Campus. We have done a net-zero feasibility assessment of this uh. This building. And the goals are to reduce the utility costs and achieve net-zero by twenty forty-five. Uh, I'm really excited to work on a building like this because it's, there's, there's a lot of Sidney and Campuses in the world, like older, normal buildings that can, we need to get them. To the net-zero. It can't be just the new flashy buildings that are net-zero. We need to get everything to net-zero. So starting with something like Sidney and Campus where the utility bills are, are quite high, and we're looking to make those reductions, is a good place to start. Uh, so once this assessment's been finalized, staff will make recommendations about what retrofits uh, for future capital budgets. We've also applied to the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program, which would support up to eighty percent of retrofit costs. So that would be a really, a good opportunity to make this a, a demonstration project for the county and to have that, that. Costs covered by the federal government and get us to a, a net-zero place. Uh, more quickly and also save on future capital costs and, and um, utility costs uh, going forward. If we can get, the sooner we get to net-zero, the sooner we start saving on the energy costs. Um, I'd really also be looking at doing additional net-zero feasibility studies either on individual buildings or sort of a complete strategy, looking at all of our. All of our buildings um, to, to sort of assess where, where to go next. Uh, so that's future work uh, and will be something that the Climate Change Data Coordinator will be, will be working on. Uh, finally, corporate action about um, zero, zero miss, uh, zero emission fleet vehicle adoption. So this is moving from um, gas cars to EVs. And we have com- uh, completed assessments about our long-term EV and charging needs, as well as the current electrical capacity of key buildings. So in, the conclusion of that work is that most of our particularly transport depots will need an upgrade in the electrical systems to meet our long-term charging needs. Uh, so we're, rec staff is recommending a phased approach where we're going to do, as a phase one, install some level-two chargers, which are the slower chargers. In locations where uh, electrical upgrades are not required to do that, and where level-two charging will be appropriate for the long term. So level-two charging would be a good place where, where vehicles are parked overnight for charging um, the, the. Small trucks and SUVs, that kind of thing. We're not doing um, ambulances and snowplows yet, cuz we haven't figured that out, but we will. Uh, and we're planning to apply for ZVAP funding from Entercan to support this first round of, of infrastructure. Uh, that application isn't open yet, so we don't know the details of exactly what, what that will entail, so when that application opens, we'll be coming forward uh, with it, with a more concrete plan. And then we're gonna as well continue to explore um, upgrading that electrical system so we can get to the point where we can. Support the level-two and level-three chargers that we need for the long term for the full electrification of, of the fleet. Uh, so that's, that's wraps up our, our actions to date. Uh, but we wanted to just touch on ongoing monitoring and reporting. Uh, we have set some ambitious uh, but achievable climate goals, both on the corporate and community side. So we're looking at net-zero for community by twenty fifty and for corporate by twenty forty-five. So we wanna be actually tracking, like, are we, is what we're doing actually being effective in achieving those goals? So the Climate uh, Change Data Coordinator will be assisting in developing the best practices in data collection, analysis, and reporting so that we can actually see if we're, we're getting to where we need to go. But at the same time, we need to balance the time and staff effort put into reporting to this. Time and effort put into actually doing the initiatives that achieve the reduction. So we're trying to balance those between the effort spent um, reporting on things and the time spent doing things. So, that's, that's the plan going forward. And we also wanna be measuring and reporting on things that will help us improve our, our programs. So looking at, was this program effective? Did it achieve the goals we wanted? Uh, and how might we modify the program to make it more effective? So that's the kind of measurement that we're gonna be emphasizing. All right, so just a summaries, we're, cuz wanted to let you know where we are financially. So there's a lot of these initiatives are already fully funded with, within the current budgets. So that includes the county building naturalization, the Experimental Acres up till December. Uh, the Southwestern Ontario EV Charging Network, the Tri-County uh, Rural Green Development Standards, Greener Homes in Gray. The Community Efficiency Financing Feasibility Study, the Net Zero Feasibility Assessment of Rockwood Terrace and Sidney and Campus. As well as the two new staff positions, the Outreach and Engagement, and the Climate Change Director Coordinator. Those are al- already fully funded with current, current budget. Additional support may be requested either in a future report or in the budget process to support some of these other initiatives, which we're looking to leverage. Continue partnerships, continue to have impact, and leverage other, other funding opportunities. So continuing the Experimental Acres Project, um, that's pending some conversations with Wellington. And implementing the net uh, zero retrofits on Sidney and Campus, uh, pending the outcome of that GICB funding, if we get the funding to uh, to do that project. Um, additional net-zero feasibility studies on other buildings and as, as well as a net-zero building strategy. Now, we may need some external support for the climate uh, data coordinator to work on that. As well as some more energy and analysis tools, so we can really understand what our buildings are doing. Um, we may be looking, once we have a fully-fledged project, looking for matching funding to support the ZVAP application for the charging infrastructure. Um, but the application doesn't open until the fall, so we, we'll uh, we'll be coming back with that at a later time. And uh, we're also looking to create a climate adaptation plan. That is the only one of the key next steps that we're not currently actioning. Um, and we're looking for a suitable funding program to support that work. Uh, and it's potentially coming from FCM in, in the fall, but it's just a rumor, so I don't wanna confirm that at this point. Um, so that's what I have for you today, and thank you very much for your time and attention, and uh, looking forward to any questions or comments.
Well, thank you very much, Rebecca. That was a. Very in-depth report. Lot of information there. Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Body?
Thank you, uh, through you, Warden. Um, specifically with the Corporate Action Number Eight and partially with the uh, Community Plan Number Seven. We seem to only be talking about EVs. And we've got a company here that's producing uh, big equipment that's going to produce hydrogen. We've got a company just across the border in Bruce County that's producing hydrogen and are going to be set up at the airport, selling hydrogen for hydrogen refill. Uh, everything that I'm reading is that if you're on gas now, you're likely to go to batteries. So the battery stations along the highways coming through Gray County makes sense to me. Uh, if you're on diesel, they say you're more likely to go to uh, hydrogen because it's uh, you can store it for longer. So think of a farmer in a field, probably goes eight hours in a day without getting out of the tractor, I'm guessing. Uh, you know, long-term, all day long, it's. Probably in diesel or is, are they mostly in gas? Diesel. So opportunities there as we spread out into the community to uh, to have hydrogen and to become a hydrogen hub. And uh, even for our own heavy uh, truck snow removals and uh, you know, big trucks that we potentially could, should be looking at. Hydrogen as much as uh, EV. Uh, electric, small pickup trucks, and those types of things make sense, but I, I, I just don't see that reflected anywhere in there, and I'm wondering if it should be or if it is somewhere. Thanks.
There we go. Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, so I, I, I think the, the story is that we, we, we haven't really got to the point where we're looking at those heavier, heavier-duty vehicles yet. We're wanting to start with the sort of more low-hanging fruit, being the smaller pickup trucks and the, the SUVs type. Uh, both for on the charging side and on the vehicle procurement side. Uh, absolutely, we will be looking, once it's sort of in the plans to be looking at the heavier, heavier-duty vehicles, we'll be exploring all available technologies. And uh, I don't know if there are hydrogen-powered vehicles available at this point, like in this very, like if I wanted to buy one tomorrow, I'm not sure I could. So, we're gonna wait and just uh, but look at, certainly we're looking at those technologies um, for the larger equipment.
Thank you. It's my understanding there are uh, hydrogen vehicles on the market, but the problem is getting them, uh, getting them refilled. Uh, there are hydrogen trucks that are coming out, most of them being developed in California and in the States because of grant money. There is also opportunities that we've got a study coming through the city that you can uh, put an adapter onto a diesel truck. And go up to twenty percent uh, hydrogen running a diesel combustion engine. Uh, don't know if it's gonna work, don't know how expensive it's, it's going to be, but watch, we should have a report coming, and uh. I suspect that we're going to get to the point that it'll only make sense if we're sharing it with other municipalities and uh, with the, with the county and getting everyone to. Buy in on that piece of apparatus, if it works at all. They're using it in, in Alberta. It's partly testing, and I think the opportunity's either there or almost there, so it's coming quickly. Thank you.
Counselor DeBrin.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Rebecca. I. Don't wanna be skeptical about electrical vehicles, and especially our larger vehicles. But visiting FCM and the ISO that indicated that if. Every street in Ontario had two EVs, the grid would be taken down. It can't handle it. So I appreciate the ability to install. Level-two charging stations and going in this route. What is the province or what is the, what is the capacity of charging those vehicles? We can go full throttle or put the pedal to the metal. Uh, we can, we can take a charge and. Get moving on it, but can the grid handle us converting all of, all of our municipalities, converted all of our smaller vehicles to EVs? And what is the best practice to considering hybrid, given our rural environments? Uh, being net-zero, do the hybrid? Is, is that being considered? Is is that being considered? Thank you.
Yeah. So uh, thinking about the grid, uh, that's certainly something that the people who think about the grid all day are also thinking about. So uh, the ISO recently came up with a report. Uh, it was my actually my first debut uh to report to council about the ISO de- decarbonation, decarbonization study, and they're looking at how do they improve the grid because they see this demand coming. Because that's how we're, that's how Canada is going to achieve our net zero goals is to move from the fossil fuels to electrification for all kinds of things, not just the vehicles, but also their our heating and our cooling and everything is going that way. So there are definitely people who are thinking about that grid um situation and trying to figure out how to how to solve it. Um, part of these solutions might be things that are uh local generation. So things like solar, things like wind, things that are that are close by so that we're not even connecting to the, we're at least supplementing what the grid is providing with local generation so that we can, we're not entirely reliant on on the grid for for everything. Um, so like, yes, lots of solutions are being considered and they've got many different pathways um for what what they're doing. The second question, part of the question was about switching to hybrid. Yeah. Um, so I think hybrid is sort of an intermediate step, but hybrid is certainly better than a full gas car. But if we're looking to be net zero, we are looking for something that's fully electric. Uh, and it's going to depend on the use case again, because um, you know, if at the moment we don't have um capacity to get fully electric everything. Um, but there is enough availability for some of the light duty stuff that we're we're going to go with, I think, fully electric um where we can and potentially wait on some of the other stuff till the technology kind of catches up and makes it possible to do fully fully electric or as the you know, fully hydrogen. Um, that's another, that's another option for those heavier equipment pieces than that that problem is is in the future of that those heavier pieces, but the uh existing technology will work for the the low um the low duty uh lighter duty vehicles, which is what we're looking at is our is our first foray into this uh electrification of our fleet.
Thank you for that answer. Any other questions? Counselor Greg?
Thanks. And through you, Warden, um, I guess I don't have skepticism. I have more hesitancy in terms of what we're looking at undertaking. I like to own the problem, I guess, is the way I'll put it. I own my contribution to climate change and I work hard at reducing it as best I can. And I think what we have control over corporately here is the actions of ourselves. There's a lot in the report that focuses on community, but I to a large extent, community is already tired of being told what to think, how to live, who to like. What will happen in the greater community is simple economics. When we're running out of fuel, uh fossil fuel, the price will be triple what it is now, and that's the motivator. Or when we all switch to electricity, it'll be five times what it is now, and it's going to it's going to hurt, but economics will drive what happens in the community. So there's a lot of focus on the community here, which is good and building partnerships is excellent. But we have a lot of staff resources I see kind of being attributed to some of those actions. And we need those. We're going to need the monetary amounts to fund our own conversion and to own our own contribution. I think going home and or going green and gray was set sixty four percent, I think, was transportation uh in term terms of uh greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, but of the six bullet points at the very end of the document, transportation wasn't in any of those suggested actions that people can take. Um, action one is is great. We have property here that should be naturalized, but I'm hesitant if we are uh, we want to leverage the partnership, but this morning it looked like plastic signs, just a small instance that I'm coming up the hill. It looks like plastic signs. The best thing to do in terms of combating usage is not is not create plastic waste to start with. We recycle very minimal content of it, and some of that's discharged back into our waterways and clothing and rubber tires and so forth now. So I don't want to hear inherit things perhaps that the partnerships should be doing. We have the property, but I'm hesitant to locate a lot of staff resources into action one. Um, action three, it looks like steady and data. To me, I grew up in the farm. Is it not already in the best interests of the farmer to be sustainable? It it strikes me as as such. And for taxpayers perhaps to be funding fencing or some different initiatives. I'm not sure. I think that's something we should be supporting using taxpayers' dollars for. Um, and it's almost sounds close to bonusing, um, which is not allowed. Um, so I have some hesitancy in action three, action four. A community gardens. I feel like those that are most interested in community gardens are already aware of the community garden. So I'm not sure who our audience that we're looking to to engage with there. Um, action eleven, green standards on new buildings. You can create an extremely green building right now if you're willing to pay for it. I mean, you can insulate to twelve inches thick walls and and you won't lose any any air, but it's an affordability issue for most people. Um, so I have hesitancy on how much, how many municipal resources we're going to direct to building that program when in simple terms, it's not, if it's affordable for people, they'll do it. If it's not, they'll do the best they can. Um, action twelve, concern with taxpayer funding home improvements, perhaps for uh his or her neighbor. Um, the Canada Green Home Grants funded federally. Uh, those are consumption tax dollars. It's not property tax dollars that are driving that. So I certainly have hesitancy about uh Bruce on on one street completes his own renovations, and then he's uh also funding Nancy's renovations right next door when she gets to it. Action nineteen, again, the efforts seem to already be in, they're directed to people who already care. I'd like to see more focus on the corporate actions here. Those are what we have um best capacity to own, to change, to um reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that our staff travel um annually, collect that data. Like, we have a lot of resources in house. The report kind of speaks to adding more staff through a study and um, I just, I just have hesitancy um for council to support allocating more resources to that and not focusing on more what we should be owning, which is corporate. That's where our focus should be. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Bruce and Nancy, thank you as well. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey, did you have something you want?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and thanks for back. Good morning, County Council. I guess I have some hesitancy also. Maybe not to the degree that uh councillor Greg does, or at least I'm not going to go into that degree. But in regards to the green standards for new buildings, I'm just wondering, are we staying in our lane as a county? We talk about building codes. Is that not a provincial matter? I'm just wondering why the county is going to be investing time and effort into building code that another level of government may be doing. So I just want to make sure with all these things that we're staying in our lane and we're not duplicating things that other levels of government may already be doing.
There we go. Yes, for sure. That that's a that's a great question. Um, the the province does have a a standard building code, but it's not necessarily focused on primarily on sustainability. So many other municipalities have gone sort of over and above what the province is required with the view to develop green uh more green new builds. It's one of the goals that's highlighted in Going Green and Gray about having all community buildings um built to a to a sustainable standard. And it's not going to be achieved without some some input from from the municipal side of things to to sort of elevate those codes. Um, and the reason we're developing, working to develop our own is that we don't want to just replicate what's been done in large cities like Toronto or Mississauga. We have a very different kind of building and development industry here and a very different goals. Like, we're not building twenty story sky rises. So we need to think about what what is appropriate for our communities. And the most efficient way to do that is in collaboration with with everybody and thinking about involving the lower tiers. Uh, a lot of the project will be and the work of the consultant will be to consult with the local development industry, consult with the local staff of of the municipalities to understand their needs and understand and making making green development standards that really work both economically and environmentally for this community, for this place. Uh, so that's that's the goal behind that project.
Just to add to uh Rebecca's great response to that question, I think what Gray and our fellow community or fellow counties are doing along with many others across the province is trying to fulfill our leadership responsibility. I think there is a is a responsibility and an expectation that we're looking towards the future and we're doing what we can now to prepare for that future as opposed to being put in a position of only being able to react at the last moment when that might be prohibitively expensive or disruptive to many people. So the houses that are going to be built today and tomorrow are the houses that are we're going to have for many, many years into the future. And we can either think about how to make those improvements in houses as they're built so that we have the benefit of that, or we're going to have to think about retrofits into the future, which is always more disruptive and more expensive. It's why do they tear down buildings as opposed to re- renovating them? And in a lot of cases, because it's so much more difficult to make those changes after the fact. The other thing about looking across a a green building standard and working with our member municipalities, I think every one of you know that your building officials and your building departments are run off their feet. They don't have any capacity to be taking on a projects like this and leading them. So what we can do to do that groundwork, to do that basic research, to have those conversations so that we're assisting them in being able to respond consistently across the whole region to questions from developers and from individual homeowners about, I want to do this, is this going to be okay? Um, the people that are looking to um bring new green products to market, one of the things that Canada and Ontario has been criticized for is our, you know, are we innovative? Do we have the productivity that we're supposed to? Well, part of being able to be innovative and and product and productive is ensuring that there's a path there to get things approved and allow them to be used. And so this is part of that is to kind of clear that pathway, to take some of the risk out of the out of the equation for the developers or for the individual homeowners. So I think that's why this went into the Climate Change Action Plan. That was some of the thinking that went behind it and some of the things that we talked about with the last council.
And as my uh local CBO continually tells me, the building code is the absolute minimum. There's lots of room above and beyond. Any further questions, discussion? Not seeing any. Counselor Body?
I'm I'm I'm, thank you, uh, Warden Melon. I'm replying to your comment as much as uh any, I suppose. We've got to walk that fine line that if you're uh working with a developer and you tell them that you're going to add X number of dollars because that's what we want beyond the building code. A, they're either going to say, no, we don't have to exceed the building code, or B, we'll build in uh some other county or some other municipality. So it's it's a fine line. It's nice if you do have somebody that comes along and says, I want that. I would have hoped that they do their own research before they rely on ours necessarily. But I can see where we want to have some kind of a an understanding of where we're going. It's going to come back to the province to force that into the building code. And we can put a lot of time into it and find out that they've done something different, or maybe we get lucky and we hit the right things. Maybe luck isn't the right word because we're bound to have to go in the same direction when we got there. So being prepared before the province pushes us there perhaps, but i- it is i- i- there's there's two sides to it. Thanks.
Yeah, fair point, fair point, good point. Okay. Not seeing any further questions, discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Thank you very much. We've been at this for an hour and a half. Would anybody like a stretch? Counselor Greg?
Thanks, Warden, for indulging me. I just wonder if I could introduce a subsequent motion or ask a question perhaps before that. What is the timeline in terms of reporting back in terms of the initiate uh the initiatives that have been um captured in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three and so forth and going green and gray? Um, these are, the report speaks largely largely to next steps. But it would be nice to know what have we accomplished? And I'm just wondering, is there a plan? Uh, template in terms of when that will be reported back or what's in place?
Good question. I'll ask Rebecca or Randy. Do you have your hand up or who wants to take that? Randy, you take a run at it.
Uh, thank you for that question, Council Greg, and and uh through the Climate Change Action Plan, there was targets that were identified by council in terms of milestones to hit in terms of uh achieving some of those uh greenhouse gas emission reductions. And of course, all the actions identified in the action plan over the next twenty plus years. Um, so in terms of reporting back, so part of the, as as Rebecca indicated, part of the data coordinator's responsibilities will be uh setting up some of that monitoring and tracking of data and information. So once that's established and we can start uh generating some of that information, be able to report back to council in terms of where we're at in terms of achieving achieving those targets. Um, so we anticipate that will be likely later this year, early next in terms of reporting back on that. And we hope to do that on an annual basis going forward. Uh, but really trying to uh zero in on those five year increment targets as well uh that council has established and set uh as part of the action plan.
Okay. All right. So it's uh eleven twenty five or thirty five rather. Why don't we reconvene at eleven forty five? And we'll proceed from there. And we'll proceed from there. And beyond. Any further questions, discussion? Not seeing any, councillor Boddy.
I'm, 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 thank you, uh, Warden. I'm replying to your comment as much as any, I suppose. We've got to walk that fine line that if you're working with a developer and you tell them that you're going to add X number of dollars because that's what we want beyond the building code. A, they're either going to say, no, we don't have to exceed the building code, or B, we'll build in uh, some other county or some other municipality. So it's, it's a fine line. It's nice if you do have somebody that comes along and says, I want that. I would have hoped that they'd do their own research before they rely on ours necessarily. But I can see where we want to have some kind of a, an understanding of where we're going. It's going to come back to the province to force that into the building code. And we can put a lot of time into it and find out that they've done something different, or maybe we get lucky and we hit the right things. Maybe luck isn't the right word because we're bound to have to go in the same direction when we got there. So being prepared before the province pushes us there perhaps, but i- it is. I- i- there's, there's two sides to it. Thanks.
Yeah, fair point, fair point, good point. Okay, not seeing any further questions, discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Thank you very much. We've been at this for an hour and a half. Would anybody like a stretch? Councillor Greg.
Thanks, Warden, for indulging me. I just wonder if I could introduce a subsequent motion or ask a question. Perhaps before that, what is the timeline in terms of reporting back in terms of the initi- uh, the initiatives that have been? Um, captured in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three and so forth and going. Green and gray. Um, these are, the report speaks largely largely to next steps. But it would be nice to know what have we accomplished? And I'm just wondering, is there a plan? Uh, template in terms of when that will be reported back or? What's in place?
Good question. I'll ask Rebecca or Randy. Do you have your hand up or who wants to take that? Randy, you take a run at it.
Uh, thank you for that question, councillor Greg, and, and uh. Through the climate change action plan, there was targets that were identified by council in terms of milestones to hit. In terms of achieving some of those greenhouse gas submission reductions. And of course, all the actions identified in the action plan over the next twenty-plus years. Um, so in terms of reporting back, so part of the, as, as Rebecca indicated, part of the data coordinator's responsibilities will be. Uh, setting up some of that monitoring and tracking of data and information. So once that's established and we can start uh, uh. Generating some of that information, be able to report back to council in terms of where we're at in terms of achieving, achieving those targets. Um, so we anticipate that will be likely later this year, early next. In terms of reporting back on that, and we hope to do that on an annual basis going forward. Uh, but really trying to uh, zero in on those five-year increment targets as well. Uh, that council has established and set as part of the action plan.
Okay, all right. So it's eleven twenty-five or thirty-five rather. Why don't we reconvene at eleven forty-five? And we'll proceed from there. Thank you, Mary Lou. Are there any questions from the council? Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and uh, you know, sitting on the uh, community service committee, we've certainly, you know, had uh. The presentation, you know, from the uh. The new program that's being uh. Developed and uh, certainly warranted, certainly needed in our area. It'll be a tremendous resource and I would certainly move that we amend the motion to uh. Start that contribution uh, through our reserve funding this year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second for that amendment? Councillor Nielsen? Any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Greg.
Um. Thank you through you, Warden. Uh, my comments, I guess, are that I believe our. Funding should be this year. That it should be in four hundred thousand dollars in totality uh, to be funded from the existing reserve. Beyond that, we're reaching for monies that we do not currently have. We're looking at uh, extraordinary. Uh, financial requirements, particularly in long-term care uh, in the very. Forthcoming future. Um, again, we have made significant contributions through the county, uh, and we had a wonderful deputation earlier regarding the supportive outreach services. Um, I think they're about a half a million dollars right now. Uh, three, about seventy percent of that was funded, but otherwise locally funded, and we may have to continue that if uh, other funding partners disappear. We are looking forward to opening the Fourteenth Street West Outreach uh, or Supportive Housing. Uh, build in Owen Sound. So the county is making already extraordinary commitments. Uh, alongside the Bayview Wellness Treatment Center. Uh, so I have. Um. I don't think um. It's prudent at this time for us to go beyond uh, four hundred thousand dollars in terms of total funding. Um. So I. The amendment, is it, the amendment is on the screen there from councillor Mackey? Most be. Might I move a motion to amend? The amendment. To four hundred thousand dollars in funding to be funded from the fund, existing healthcare reserve. Um, beginning in twenty twenty-three as. Uh, total funding, uh, as a total funding contribution. Four hundred thousand at one time.
Be heated.
Yep.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the amendment. Is there a second for the amendment? Mary, well, just hold on, Mary, unless, is it a procedural matter? Oh, well, councillor McQueen, are you seconding the? Okay, all right, Mary Lou, please.
Just a point of clarification. Uh, it wouldn't be beginning with the twenty twenty-three budget. It would be, say, beginning in twenty twenty-three. Because the budget's already passed.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Kim, I'll ask you to go first.
I'll go to councillor DeBreen.
Uh, just a, just a point of information for those of you who might not have been part of the discussion at the time that we created this policy. It's a provincial requirement that um, ten percent of the cost of uh, any um, capital, healthcare capital project. Is fundraised from the community. That, that's something that's part of the, the provincial funding model. So um. In this particular case, um, of a twenty-five million dollar. Project, Grabus Health Services would be responsible for raising at least two point five million from the community. And one of the things that we talked about at the time of the, the policy coming forward was that um. This was a very difficult thing for rural communities to do. As opposed to our more urban neighbors. Just because of the population density that we have and the depth in the, potentially in the business community. Um, an MRI or a building costs what it costs, whether you're in Burlington or Owen Sound. And so that, that ten percent um, commitment is a significant one for um. For our area and many other rural areas across the province. So that was part of the thinking that, again, went into the, into the creation of the policy.
Thank you, Kim. And just to be clear, councillor Greg, were you suggesting that your amendment to? Uh, increase it to four hundred thousand? That was going to be the totality, totality of our contribution? Because I don't believe that's reflected in the amendment just yet, is it? That's the intention though. So the clerk is aware that that's the intention. Okay, councillor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Mellon, and thank you, Mary Lou. I wanted to clarify that the original motion was to. Invest two hundred thousand per year for five years. That would leave two hundred thousand in the budget next year for. Another party that might come forward uh, that might meet the criteria. To deplete the budget in its totality, the reserve in its totality for one time would, would then. We, we're going to put another four hundred thousand dollars or whatever that, the one percent is the next year. I, I just feel that the two hundred thousand dollars per year for five years is just more reasonable and it doesn't. It supports the original request but doesn't create a huge hit in the current year. So that, I just wanted to clarify and thank you for catching that, that it is as, the proposed is that it's a four hundred thousand one-time total. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Councillor Nielsen? Okay. All right. Oh, councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, as a seconder to the motion. I think it is to be noted that. Why did we not fund that uh, reserve in the past year because of challenges through our budget process? I think. As we look forward to the twenty twenty-four year at the. Ninety-six point seven or wherever it was approved at the last council. Ninety-six point seven or wherever it was approved at the last council, although. Going to that for our long-term care, we had some challenges ahead of us. And I think it speaks to itself. Why did it, why did that uh fund not be funded last year? Because of the challenges of the budget that we were at. I think this gives that opportunity to give some. Toward that uh project, but. And it could be, you know, it, it could be split over two years if, if that would, you know, if the total amount was four hundred thousand to that. I know there's going to be a lot of challenges coming in the future, and I think we have to be somewhat realistic. It doesn't say that we can't. Donate further in the future years, but I think at this point, it's being realistic. There is a large hospital that's being proposed in the Southern Georgian Bay region. I know there's. Uh, processes have been put in place in the sense of how that works. But it's going to be a regional hospital that could be coming forward in, in years to come with a, with an ask as well, as, as well. I know uh many have said that uh. Municipal government shouldn't be in the business of healthcare. We always have been, right? So I think this is sort of a realistic thing at, at the time of, of today and uh it's being realistic. So. That's why I'm with the side.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Mackey, did you have something?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and I certainly recognize that we did three quarters of a percent of, or three quarters of one percent is what we historically have been putting in. And over the last number of years, those funds have went to many worthy uh causes, Markdale Hospital, the Owen Sound Hospital, other hospitals. So. Should we be doing it? I mean, that's uh the million-dollar question, but we're forced to do it and uh. Those, those funds are certainly uh helping a lot of the residents of Gray County having these facilities. The request from Grabris Regional Health Center for the one million dollars, I think is a. It's another service that was greatly needed in, in our community and uh. On, you know, I think we need to reinstate that three quarters of a percent in our upcoming budget. I understand that uh. You know, there's lots of other asks out there too, but this is an important one, and if we need to cut. Other things within the budget, it shouldn't be this one as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, I'll call the question on the amendment to the amendment. Sorry? Oh, sorry, I thought somebody. All right, so I'm going to call the question on the amendment to the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? I'll declare that lost. Absolutely. Madam Clerk, will you take the recorded vote, please?
Counselor Mackey? Opposed, Counselor McKay? Opposed. Counselor Carlton? Opposed, Counselor Pringle? Opposed, Counselor McQueen? Favor, Counselor Nielsen? Opposed. Counselor Patterson? Opposed, Counselor Dickert? Opposed, Counselor Kentner? Opposed, Counselor Keveney? Opposed, Counselor Body? Counselor Greg? In favor? Warden Milne?
Opposed.
Opposed, Counselor Dobrine? Opposed, Counselor Matrasovs?
Opposed.
Opposed, Counselor Boardingell? Sir Boardingell is in favor. Counselor Echols? In favor, Counselor Hutchinson?
Opposed.
Opposed. That motion is lost sixty-nine twenty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we're back to the original amendment to the motion uh that proposed a. Yes, that we start the contributions of a two hundred thousand eight dollars a year this year. Everyone's clear on that? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the original amendment? Not seeing any. I'll ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. So now we're back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Counselor Nielsen, you had something earlier. Do you? You're good? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Echols?
So how does the motion read now? Like, I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is. Yeah.
So the difference is, the original motion asked that the payments of two hundred thousand a year start next year. The amendment starts the payments this year. So the two hundred thousand for this year would come out of the reserve. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary Lou. Okay, it's five after twelve. Lunch is here. We have. At least two items yet to discuss. We have Forest Management Options Report and the um, the housing one. That Counselor Body asked to be pulled out of the consent. How's everybody feeling? You want to carry on or you want to stop for lunch? Carry on, all right. It's not my fault if your lunch is cold. All right, so the next report is the Forest Management Options Report. Natalie Machalco, and I see Lee Thurston is here with her. Um, someone care to move that report? Counselor Pringle and Counselor McKay? Natalie, welcome. And Lee, thank you. Welcome as well.
Uh, good afternoon, County Council. I am bringing forward this report to discuss how Gray County manages its forests. And to present a few options for management moving forward. Uh, I just want to acknowledge Gray Sawball Conservation Authority staff as well as county staff contributions to this report. Um, the county's forest manager and bylaw officer, Lee Thurston, is here today to help present. And I very much appreciate his expertise with this project. So the county owns and manages forty-five separate forest properties with, which comprises approximately three thousand hectares. Um, or just under eight thousand acres of forest. These forests are managed in accordance with the Forest Management Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and three and updated in twenty twenty-one. This plan was completed by Gray Sawball Conservation Authority in consultation with. Um, the Forest Management Plan Advisory Committee, which was composed of industry stakeholders. As a result of uh recent inventories indicating that forests are not regenerating as quickly as anticipated. Due to a variety of reasons, in addition to recent public feedback on uh harvest operations. Heightened risk of forest fires, Gray County's recent climate change action plan, going green and gray. And council's declaration of a climate emergency, county staff are seeking direction to reexamine forest management in the county-owned forests. So what is forest management? Forest management means planning and implementing practices for the stewardship and use of the forest to meet. Specific environmental, economic, social, and cultural objectives. Specifically, sustainable forest management means harvesting forests at a rate that they can regenerate. And this contributes to healthy, productive forests for present and future use. Gray County's forests are harvested um using selective harvesting, which is the selective removal of trees based on a certain criteria. Such as tree maturity, height, age, and whether the tree is diseased. This type of harvesting is done in accordance with good forestry practices. This uh method is the preferred option because selective harvesting creates a diversity of age classes. Which is beneficial for biodiversity and the overall forest health by reducing prevalence of insect outbreaks. And um reducing tree density and fire-prone ecosystems. Harvesting can also reduce the spread of Emerald Ash Bore through targeting ash trees for removal. Um, ash typically composes between twenty to thirty percent of a forest. Um, and harvesting targets the medium and large trees for removal over any other species. Another management component that I just wanted to mention as it relates to Gray, Gray County's forest management is the removal of in the invasive species buckthorn. Um, it's present in many Gray County forests, um and it involves the manual and chemical removal. Of the trees in effort to stop um the trees from spreading and overtaking the forests. This will be an ongoing project, given the amount of buckthorn that is currently present in county forests. So as I mentioned earlier, Gray County forests are managed in accordance with the Forest Management Plan. Uh, and they're also Forest Stewardship Council certified. This is a voluntary program for forestry organizations who want to demonstrate responsible forest management. And they have um their forest management practices evaluated against FSC's um standards. Through this certification, which also includes annual fee, Gray County protects areas within the forest that may contain. Significant or rare plants, animals, or ecosystems, also known as areas with high conservation value. And um there's other mitigation measures that are implemented to minimize adverse environmental impacts. And these include only harvesting between late August uh to March to avoid the bird nesting season from April to early August. And prioritizing harvest during the winter months when the ground is frozen to minimize uh disturbance to soils. The two photos on the slides, um they show the conditions during a harvest, and this is um Top Cliff. The image on the right is a preserved wildlife tree that was left standing to maintain wildlife habitat. I will note that um during a harvest or leading up to a harvest, the county uh will often receive. Um, concern from members of the public about the destruction of forests as a result of harvest operations. So this image shows uh copper kettle. And uh it was harvested in twenty twenty, so it's been a few years. And you can kind of start to see the regeneration beginning as the saplings are starting to grow and fill in. So I just wanted to take a step back um from the Gray County's forests and talk more broadly about the impact of. Climate change on forests and forest role in climate mitigation. Research shows that forests help maintain the earth's carbon balance and moderate climate change. By absorbing about one quarter of the carbon emitted by human activities, such as the burning of fossil fuels or changes in land use. Natural Resources Canada indicates that forests can act as either carbon sources or carbon sinks. So a forest is considered a carbon source if it releases more carbon than it absorbs through burning trees or a tree decay. And it would be considered a carbon sink if it absorbs more carbon um from the atmosphere than it releases. Due to disturbances like forest fires and insect infestations, Canada's forests have a, as a whole have become carbon sources. So they're actually releasing more carbon than they're accumulating in any given year. There's a lot of debate around old growth forests versus managed forests. And the literature appears to indicate that older forests store more carbon than younger forests, but they sequester carbon at a uh lower rate. Um, because younger forests uh have trees that are fast-growing, so they uh absorb carbon more quickly. So the literature also indicates that age diversity within a forest and across the landscape is the best way to maximize both carbon storage. And sequestration while contributing to climate resilience and forest health. Climate change is anticipated to have several impacts on forests as it affects the growth and productivity of forests. And it could also alter the frequency of disturbances such as insect outbreaks, invasive species, and wildfires. When it comes to um forests and climate change mitigation, there are studies that indicate. Old growth are critical for carbon sequestration um and. Mitigation of climate change and protecting biodiversity, where, whereas other studies point to improved management practices. Mitigate climate change by increasing the forest carbon stock through storing carbon in forest products. And by generating uh wood-based materials. That would substitute, substitute fossil fuels. These findings are important because they outline how further research on cause and effect relationships are um needed. And um it shows the difference between different management practices and carbon stocks. In different forest ecosystems are needed to account for human-induced changes. The common theme from this research is that um forest should continue to be monitored and managed. Uh, management should be adaptive and follow current best practices. So county staff have investigated forest management practices in Bruce, Dufresne. And Simcoe Counties as well as um Gray Sawbells practices and Soggy and Valley Conservation Authorities' practices. These authorities, they all manage their forests in accordance with their respective forest management plans. And some of these authorities have investigated different options such as um a carbon offset project. But none of them have a current project at this time. Just to talk a little bit more about um carbon offset projects. A carbon offset refers to a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Or an increase in carbon storage that is used to compensate for emissions that would occur elsewhere. Forest carbon markets, they allow businesses, municipalities, and other organizations to purchase carbon credits to offset their emissions. A forest carbon credit would be created when a landowner um. Uh, undertakes a specific project to increase their forest's ability to absorb either carbon dioxide uh and store carbon. The projects are then monetized in the marketplace and the increased carbon dioxide intake by forests is used to offset emissions. By another entity. There are a few different types of carbon offset projects and the different criteria for eligibility. But I will go uh into more detail about that in the upcoming slides. So staff have identified four options for council's consideration. The first one is continuing with the harvesting and amend the harvest schedule in the Forest Management Plan. Harvest in select county forests only. Look into potentially a carbon offset project or discontinue harvesting altogether. Staff recommend proceeding with option A in addition to investigating carbon offset projects. And identifying county forests where harvesting may not be feasible for ecological or access reasons through options B and C. So to talk a little bit about um Forest Management Option A, if council were to support continuing with harvesting in county forests. The current harvest schedule in the Forest Management Plan would need to be amended. The Forest Management Plan stipulates a current harvest cycle of ten years for plantations and fifteen years for hardwoods. So all of the hardwood forests are at the total basal area of twenty meters squared per hectare. Um, recent inventories identify that these stands did either. Uh, not respond well to the previous thinning or that these stands were harvested beyond the ideal retention limit. And there's several possible reasons for this. Um, the first one could be failure to uh follow tree marking prescriptions in historic harvest. More trees could have been removed um during past harvest than what was permitted. Specific growing conditions during the previous fifteen to twenty-year cycle didn't produce the anticipated volumes or any combination of these factors. Um, so I'm just going to pass it off to Lee to talk a little bit more about the proposed harvest schedule.
Okay, I'm going to give you a crash course in forestry and give you my thirty-five-plus years' knowledge into one slide. So we have two types of forests here. We have plantations, which are man-made, of course, and we have naturally occurring stands. Our naturally occurring stands are basically all upland tolerant hardwoods. And as foresters, we have a little, our own little language. One of the terms is basal area, and Natalie referred to that. Basal area basically is if you cut every stem off in a hectare at one point three meters or breast height. Basal area is the area of surface of all those cut stems, okay? We know that upland tolerant hardwoods respond best between sixteen meters squared and twenty-two meters squared. So when we do our good forestry prac- practices, single tree selection, we try and target twenty meters squared as a retention. Now, the past management plan was a fifteen-year cycle. And taking it to twenty meters squared. I have no idea what happened in the past. But our stands aren't there. We're sitting anywhere from eighteen to twenty, somewhere maybe twenty-one, twenty-two at the most. So when I wrote the new management plan. I left it at fifteen years and twenty meters squared. I've had to push out a few stands because of that, because they're not there. There's nothing to harvest if I try and target twenty. So what I'd like to do is target sixteen to eighteen. And extend the cycle out to twenty-five. I know Brian was involved with the uh Forest Management Plan. And uh we should have, we should have given some room for me to work with, but we didn't. We put it at fifteen years. So anyways, that's what I would like to see proposed for the future is a twenty-five-year cycle. And I'll give it back to Natalie.
All right, so option B. Option B would be harvesting in select county forests only. So there might be some forests that are more suitable for harvesting than others. For example, there are areas with high densities of carbon, or if there's areas of significant ecological or conservation value, they might warrant protection through the establishment of reserves, which would be areas with little to no harvest activity. Limiting harvest in some counties' forests would also promote old forest conditions, which they do play a role in carbon sequestration and the mitigation of climate change. There may be some county forests not suitable for harvesting because forest access is difficult, or the forest can only be accessed via non-county property. For example, Dromore County Forest can only be accessed from a private landowner's driveway. And this is facilitated through an agreement with the county. And the landowner allows forestry and contractor staff to access the county forest. Additional county forests less suitable for harvest due to access might include Colaport Uplands, Osprey Wetlands, and the Lewick Mill. Areas with a high volume of recreational use may also be considered for a non-harvest forest or a portion of a forest for non-harvest. Some of the harvests that we hear the greatest public concern over are those that have high concentrations of trail usage. And county staff will receive concerns from trail users. The forests that are determined to be less suitable for harvest can be monitored each year for disease and insect infestation. So option C would allow the county to explore carbon offset projects and determine whether the county forest would be eligible. There are three main types of projects, the first one being avoided conversion, which is protecting the forest from future development to keep carbon in the forest. The second one would be afforestation, reforestation, or revegetation, which is growing new trees in areas that previously weren't treated. Improved forest management is the third one, and it involves using practices that increase the amount of carbon dioxide removed from the air as well as carbon stored in an existing forest by creating a reserve or harvesting less frequently to grow larger trees or thinning to allow the remaining trees to grow, have more room to grow. Improved forest management is the most common forest carbon offset type. And it would be the most applicable type to county forests, as currently all the county forests undergo scheduled management by way of selective harvesting. When county staff consulted with a carbon offset project organization, they provided some general information on eligibility. And these were requirements around land ownership and the minimum amount to forest area to be economically viable as a single project. In the business as usual forest management, all merchantable timber is harvested, whereas in improved forest management, it requires harvesting to be within the forest growth limits. Carbon credits would allow for an additional revenue source where revenue would be made on harvested wood in addition to the carbon credits. There might be some instances where projects are not eligible, and this is when two terms come into play. The first one would be the principle of additionality and leakage. So the principle of additionality means that areas that were acquired and designated as protected. And typically, there's a timeframe associated with this. So for example, acquired prior to the year two thousand, they wouldn't qualify for carbon credits. There would have to be some sort of change of use such as harvesting not all merchantable timber or stopping harvesting altogether in order to qualify. Leakage occurs when there is a net increase in greenhouse gas emissions outside of an area as a result of that area's activity. So in other words, if harvesting were to stop at one location, there would be an increase in harvesting at another location due to the lost supply. So it would, people who need to heat their homes with wood, they would still need the product, so it would increase the demand from another supplier. Leakage is dependent on the type of wood product to be harvested. So if we look at fuel wood, it's often consumed locally. And it can be somewhat sourced easily in the region, so leakage would be anticipated to be high. Some assessments for carbon offset projects consider the risk of leakage to be so high that project areas where fuel removal represents more than five percent of the annual harvest level, they wouldn't be eligible. So Gray Sobel Conservation, they engaged Carbon Zero to complete a project feasibility assessment to investigate the viability of a forest carbon offset for their lands. Carbon Zero suggested that Gray Sobel could have a project that would bring in revenue between thirty-two thousand and ninety-eight thousand per year. This would exclude any costs associated with the project or carbon broker fees. The report highlighted the main reasons for the low revenue projections, which speak to the terms mentioned earlier, the principle of additionality and leakage. So forty-seven percent of Gray Sobel's land base has not had forest management. And through the principle of additionality, it wouldn't qualify for carbon credits. Most of Gray Sobel's land was acquired and designated as protected prior to the year two thousand. So in order to receive credits for these lands, there would need to be some sort of changed use. The second thing is the leakage. So if Gray Sobel were to cease harvesting in their forests, there would be an increase in harvesting at another location due to the lost supply. And Carbon Zero estimates leakage to be between forty and seventy percent. Bruce County has signed up for the development of a forest carbon offset project, but they are currently waiting on the federal protocols for the compliance market to be released prior to proceeding with the project. If council provided direction to further investigate a carbon offset project, staff would need to work with purchasing staff on the proper procurement process for this. Option D, so the county has the option to discontinue harvesting. This option would have several impacts. The first one being that forest growth would slow and eventually decline as a result of a lack of harvesting, which could result in the forest becoming carbon sources. The second impact would be leakage, as mentioned in the last slide with respect to Gray Sobel's feasibility assessment. If Gray County would stop harvesting, were to stop harvesting, harvesting would increase somewhere else. The contract with the county, the Gray Sobel contract with the county would also be impacted. As forty percent of the Gray County Forest Manager bylaw officer's job is forest management. And thirty to forty percent of the ecological lands technician's job is species at-risk assessments, which are completed in county forests to determine areas that should be avoided during harvest. The approximate cost savings would be around seventy-two thousand. Tree marking wouldn't be required, and neither would FSC program costs, which would also result in cost savings. The FSC program certification cost is seven thousand three hundred. There would be, of course, a loss of revenue from the harvesting, which is projected to be between fifty thousand to seventy thousand based on the current forest management plan. County staff have considered the best management option for county forests, not just from a financial perspective, but from a forest health and an overall climate change perspective. And for these reasons, county staff are not recommending option D at this time. So as mentioned, if harvesting were to stop altogether, then the revenue loss would be between fifty to seventy thousand annually. But this would be offset by cost savings revenue. This revenue would be subject to fluctuation based on the wood market and the number of hectares harvested. For example, the annual revenue from county forests over the past five years ranged between seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, the average being seventy-five thousand. Cost savings would come from tree marking, FSC program costs, and costs towards contract staff completing forest management and SAR inventories. And this is estimated between eighty-five and a hundred thousand annually. If the county were to harvest in select county forests, cost savings would come from less tree marking, which also fluctuates based on factors such as the company that provides that service. The loss of revenue from harvesting may be able to be partially recouped from a forest carbon offset project. Staff would need to engage a carbon broker to complete a feasibility assessment to determine the county's potential revenue from a project. If council were to support option A, the revenue is anticipated to be closer to or below fifty thousand annually, given fewer hectares will be harvested per year to allow forests to increase the anticipated growth of twenty-six meters squared per hectare in twenty-five years. Some other considerations include putting money toward future climate change action plan studies pertaining to forest cover and land use. And then using forest revenue from harvest or carbon credits for conservation purposes. So that brings me to the recommendations of this report. That this report regarding forest management options be received. That this report be shared with member municipalities within Gray County for their review. Let staff be directed to proceed with amending the harvest schedule in the forest management plan to twenty-five years and reduce the total basal area to sixteen to eighteen meters squared per hectare. And that staff be directed to prepare a further report for council's consideration, exploring potential revenue from carbon offset projects based on the amended harvest schedule. Identifying select forests where harvesting may not be feasible from an ecological, recreational, or asset access perspective, and then provide for public consultation on the county's forest management approaches. I just wanted to close with the sentiment that the county forests are not there to be sources of income and they're not managed to be as such. It is important to consider all aspects from the overall forest health perspective, going green and gray commitments, recreational amenities, and financial considerations. If council supports the recommendation, county staff do want to undertake public consultation as there are many people that use and care deeply for the county forests. So thank you for your time and happy to take any questions.
Thank you Natalie, and thank you Lee. Lee correctly pointed out, I was on part of the task force to revise the forest management plan. I think Councilor McQueen was on that committee as well. Maybe not. But a question I had for you, Lee, one of the reasons I wonder that we left it at fifteen years, thinking about climate change, thinking things would warm up a little bit. Maybe the hardwood or the growth would accelerate. Was that part of the discussion? Do you recall? Or maybe you could comment on that.
Okay, yes, I believe that was part of the discussion at the time. Apparently it is in the northern conifers, and so that's why they were extrapolating it down to the southern. So the northern conifer stands are increasing their growth. Why it's not increasing down here, I don't know. At the same time, there's not a lot of research done in Southern Ontario since the ministry left. So, you know. Okay, oh, sorry. There we go. We should have given some leeway in the management plan rather than stipulating fifteen years. That's all.
Okay, so, Councilor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Milne. And with the the number of forest fires that are occurring and the concern about our growing forestry stands. I'm, I'm listening very intently and reading intently about our, our own county forests as well as the private managed forests that we potentially or Gray Sobel or Sogging Valley may assist in developing. What, what would, what would, I've got a couple of questions. What would reducing the basal count target to sixteen to eighteen, but extending it to twenty-five years? Will that encourage better forest management, healthier forest, and help mitigate future forest fires? And the second part of that is, what do we do in our own forest management to mitigate forest fires by incorporating or encouraging private landowners as well to incorporate those hardwood fire breaks, the appropriate amount of distance between tree stands, forest stands, so that it gives fire department, you know, some fighting chance. Thank you.
Yeah, so with extending it out to twenty-five years, but taking it down to sixteen to eighteen. I believe that's what was happening in the past anyways. They were taking it down below twenty. So by giving it twenty-five years, you've got ten more years for growth, right? We haven't had that. Plus, we lost a year because of Pretty River being taken out. So we, we were shortened up to actually fourteen-year rotation. As far as fires go, in Southern Ontario here, the only real fire hazards are in the plantations. And really only after they've had a recent harvest. Hardwood stands, you may get a fire, but it'll be the size of this counter. It'll be a lightning strike hitting a tree and the leaves will burn. So as far as fire breaks go there, when you make a plantation, the plan is you, you plan out your roots so that there is fire breaks between different areas of the stand. With the county forests, there's lots of fire breaks. Over the years, we've, the roads have been established. And there's very good fire breaks between all the different stands. As far as private land goes, same thing, the planning of the actual plantation has to incorporate those access roads.
Thank you. And that is my understanding. We're incorporating also a hardwood break as well, because they burn slower, as you said. The, the, I guess my question is, is do we have any input to those private plantations to encourage those proper plans and, and break roots?
Yeah, working at Gray Sobel over the years, I was part of the tree planting program, so I was drawing up plans for landowners. And we kind of know what we're doing as far as planting. So, yeah, the plans, as I say, they get made with access rows for for fire equipment or just harvesting equipment as well. So, yeah, we do that.
Okay, any other questions? Councilor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for your presentation and a lot of good information here. Certainly, I I think my, my mind, Woodlot Management Plan keeps your forest healthy. The simple fact is, is it is a renewable resource. It keeps things moving along where I think it's mentioned that if you leave it, you get a lot of, lot of disease and a lot of, lot of old trees. With this amendment, though, a couple of questions is, do you have the ability, if there was diseased trees that went earlier? So you mentioned about ash or there's other, I know all, seems like all trees today are being under some stress of some sort. And then even maples are dying, certain areas and stuff. Are you, do you have the ability to select cut if there are diseased or dying trees in our forests?
Very, yes, that would give me leeway. I could look at it in fifteen years and if there's trees that have to come out, we could do a selective cut then. We have been targeting the ash trees in all the stands over the last probably, we're getting close to twenty years now. So we, we've probably got rid of most of the medium and large ash and allowed the small ash to stay to hopefully get bigger. Over in the town of Blue Mountains, the maple dieback is bad up on the, on the hill up there. So, yeah, there's lots of things that can affect it, and that would be, that would give me leeway. So instead of waiting twenty-five years, if, if we're experiencing, I don't know. Tent caterpillar infestation again, and, you know, we could go in and remove the unhealthy trees.
Thank you for that, because I think you, you have to have that flexibility. There has to be some flexibility. And the other part there about the recreational part, I know a few years ago, there was a plan. And there was a county forest somewhere in Euphrasia, Hardwick, Hardwick. Or I can't remember the exact name. It was part of the Bruce Trail, and there was a lot of concern next to the Bruce Trail about cutting large stands of pine trees, and which I think at the time, Manley Riss, who was the counselor in Green Highlands planted one time, or certainly the pine grow a lot faster than hardwoods. So if that was something that was sort of being recognized on the recreational areas, I think that was it, because I know at the time, and so maybe around the table, remember that discussion, there wasn't a lot of big dollars that were gained from leaving those trees, but certainly from a beneficial from a walking and a viewing side, it would have made a big difference in the sense of seeing those trees gone versus standing there within a certain distance of that trail system. And I think it was a time when pine was very cheap. But anyway, and, you know, I know Randy, if you remember me raising that at the time, but anyway, it was, it was, it was, it was raised from the public from that. So I like, I like the idea where you see on a recreational side that there is some flexibility that maybe some of those trees could be less. So I, I like, I like the idea where you see on a recreational side that there is some flexibility that maybe some of those trees could be less, less. Thank you for that.
Okay, any other question? Councilor Ackles.
Thank you, and just in the recommendation, number two, what are we going to gain, or what? What are we looking for when the report to be shared with the member municipalities?
Yeah, I see Scott Taylor has his hand up. Scott, do you want to take a run at that?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and through you, and thank you for your question, Councilor Ackles. I think in this case, it's more for information purposes and, and knowing that sometimes your local municipal staff or our municipal counselors can be a, a first point of contact from members of the public or people living next to the forest. So I think we want to keep, keep municipal staff and council in the loop here with respect to activities in our county forests. And, and in some cases, there are municipal properties near some of our county forests that, that this may or may not impact. But I don't think we're looking for resolutions of support or anything else from the municipalities. It's more or less to inform them of the changes in this regard, because they were given the opportunity to comment on the original forest management plan as well.
And now that Mr. Taylor has spoke, no, Councilor Nielsen.
Sorry, Warden Millen, I blew it. Two questions I have, just for understanding for myself. Number one is, how many years has the county actually been managing and doing selective harvesting throughout its forests? And question two is, while I know it's not the preferred option, I'm just trying to understand the different options. You're talking about the ability for capturing carbon credits. The forests have been managed for at least the last twenty years from, I can tell from the report itself. But moving forward, if the operation of forest management ceased, what is the ability to actually potentially still capture carbon credits?
I'll take the first part. So county forests have been managed actually since the early thirties. Camp Oliver Main used to be a large forestry station with a live-in forester on site. And the other properties, as they were added over the years, I think the latest acquisitions were in the early to mid sixties. They've all come online for management as soon as they came into the county's possession.
And with respect to the carbon credits, I think it would be really helpful to have that feasibility assessment completed. Just because there are those two different options, there's the improved forest management, or there's the designation of protected. So there would have to be some sort of change of use. So, yeah, I think i- if we had some sort of assessment completed, that would provide additional information on that.
Okay, any further questions? Oh, Councilor McQueen.
Just a quick one to Lee. When you do a selective harvest, is it, is there best practices to leave seed trees or certain trees that will seed the forest again? Because I'm sure there's certain, as you mentioned about a, a particular tree there that was, had some other significance, so I would assume so, but anyway.
Yeah, so when I talk about residual basal area, when we target the tree marking, we target across all size classes, so pole, pole wood, small sawlog, medium sawlog, large sawlog. You want a residual of the large sawlogs to produce seed for the next generations. So in, when you're looking at twenty meters squared, a residual large sawlog should be around four meters squared. So we do leave seed trees, yes. Diameter limit cutting, on the other hand, which is probably fifty percent of the harvesting that goes on in Gray County, removes the best quality stock, and it degrades the forest quicker than anything else.
So that was what I was thinking about, how the regeneration hasn't happened as fast as you thought, or the growth hasn't happened. I just wondered if there's some science there that, are we doing it right? And, and is that the right process? And it sounds like it is, but you said on private, it's maybe not, so. I'll leave it at that, but there could be more into that in the sense of, you know, best practices in the sense, and because if you don't have seed trees that are going to leave the best generation of trees, then maybe there needs to be a bit more science on that side as well.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Councilor Greg.
Thanks, and I should just ask, I know at the Conservation Authority, certainly we have been targeting the ash. To what degree has the ash been targeted within the county forest? If it is, or is there potential to target it a little bit more so in the next year or two until it's a complete loss? And then potentially walk away from the forest management for a period of four or five, six years as the forests just regenerate? But is there forests right now that have a high amount of ash where you would say, well, we're losing the window of opportunity to grab that ash? And if we did, you could micro-target some of the existing hardwood before walking away from the program for, for a period of years?
Yeah, as I said earlier, we have been targeting the ash. Ash borer was discovered, I believe, in two thousand and two. And shortly thereafter that, there was two well-known foresters in Southern Ontario that came up with a manage, management plan for ash trees. And their recommendations were remove any medium and large ash in your woodlots if you expect it within ten years. If you expect it in five years, remove the smalls as well, because the ash borer will target all sizes. And as I say, we have been targeting them, probably, I'm going to say Carl started targeting them around twenty-ten. So we're at the very end of the hardwood cycle, so there's, there's a minimum of, or a maximum of two years left that I'll have to harvest the ash, and then we'll be done with the ash.
Okay. Call a question, all those in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Thank you very much, Lee. Thank you, Natalie. We go back now to the one item that was pulled from the consent agenda regarding the declaration of surplus land. Anne Marie Shaw is here to report that one. Welcome, Anne Marie. Yes, I do. I need a mover and seconder. Councilor Body and Councilor Nielsen, thank you very much.
I'm just wondering if there's any specific questions for the report that was pulled?
No. No, I, I just wanted to make her get up and walk of the cast and pick on her. No, no, I, I just, just, I think there's eleven new councillors around the table. I understand it was discussed at, at, at committee. So, so more councillors will be up on top of it than, than perhaps than I thought, but. West Mount's a part of Owen Sound that has got housing that's probably owned, owned by Owen Sound and then came to the county in about two thousand and one. Yeah, think of a wartime bungalow type except brick and a little bit bigger. Built in late fifties, early sixties, has naturally aged. Being individual houses, they are hard to maintain and put a lot of love into them without, without big budgets. So in twenty seventeen, we looked at it and came up with a long-term plan around the, it would have been discussed at committee, and I think we beat the daylights out of it before it got to council. That we would start to sell those off and move the money into maybe higher density housing and newer projects, et cetera. At the time of twenty seventeen, interest rates were under three, probably two and a half percent, and now they're over six. Prices have changed. And recently, I walked through that neighborhood and looked at the lack of density, I guess, is, although there's shared laneways, as you see in the description, there's a lot of land there. And I started to wonder if we're doing the right thing by sawing them off, or it'd be better to hold on to the land itself. At some point, take them down and start to build new housing there that would be more dense, perhaps three units together or, or different, different things. I think this would be our first sale, I believe, since we came up with a policy or getting, getting towards that. You know, part of the idea at the point of time was the interest rates were such and the prices were such that we hope that people that perhaps live in them or can't quite afford their own houses, it was an opportunity, but that might not be there at, at this point, so. I'm just wondering if we should be re-looking at that policy and thinking about holding that land, perhaps eventually tearing down houses or put together a plan to tear down houses and rebuild with more density on that land as it is, because of course, land's always hard to get. So those are my thoughts, and I don't know, Anne Marie may have answers.
Thank you for that. We've had four that have sold in the last little bit. But for years there, we didn't have any. You're correct. So it's only been over the last couple of years. One of the reasons that we looked, another reason why we looked at selling the properties was to set up a fund. We didn't have the Affordable Housing Fund at that, that time. And looking at other ways other than the levy that we could promote the growth, promote more housing being built. It is any type of housing, we looked at affordable or various types of housing that would work. So in order to make a, a unit or, or a building affordable, you need a lot of upfront money in order for that to happen so that the rents can remain a lower interest or a lower so that people can afford to live there. So we looked at the possibility of putting those funds, I think when we went also back in two thousand and, I think it might have been twenty when we had our first one or twenty-one, we came up with a, the ability to sell it and what that process would look like, and that's where we came up with this process. And it is, it allows us to pool our resources. We don't get a whole lot of funding from the province anymore to build. So that's one thing that's gone down. We do have our Affordable Housing one percent build fund that we add in, and then we also have these funds. So this allows us to build up a reserve so that we can fund options, that we can fund housing options. At our last, sorry, our second, or in June, our Community Services Committee, we talked about options for people that are experiencing homelessness or people that need transitional housing. And these funds were to go towards some of those initiatives. So I think if we were to not sell at this point, it would have an impact on some of the initiatives, the immediate initiatives that we were going to look at. We also wait until a unit goes, becomes vacant, so we don't ask people to leave. So we, all we did have in mind that if we ever did get two units beside each other that were vacant, that we could look at the possibility of a small build there. So that's certainly been on our radar, too. We have obviously a housing crisis, but our ability to sell some housing units that are at the end of their life, that are not energy efficient, and pool that money and build multiple units was kind of the idea behind, behind this initiative.
Thank you, Anne Marie, for that answer. Councilor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Millen. Thank you, Anne Marie. And I did mention or ask at the committee meeting something very similar about, you know, why would we be selling off houses when we are in a housing crisis? And whether or not there was a potential for this property being county on a shared laneway and all of that to, to perhaps the potential buyer may be interested in entertaining a multi-residential affordable concept? We could hope. And certainly, those options could be available if we were to partner with those developers. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we keep all of our options open. Thank you.
And a little bit about, our buyers have been seniors on fixed incomes, small, young families. So we really are fortunate that it has been going to people that need that price range. There's not a lot in our, in that price range available in our area even.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any further questions, discussion? A call to question, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Anne Marie. We have no closed meeting matters. We have no other business, or is there any other business? Any notice of motion? Planning Department have anything? I need one more motion. Andrea, would you like to do that? Get you into the game here? Thank you. Andrea moves adjourned. Second. Councilor Ackles, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Lunch is on.